We'll call a meeting to order for the Wilmer City Council for Tuesday, January 21st. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Fagerly, Mesky, Schwantes, Davis, Alvarado, Osmus, Plowman, Nelson, nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the power of our justice stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have two changes to the agenda as presented. One is Representative Dave Baker is unable to attend today. He had a meeting out of the area, so he was unable to be here. So he had said that he wouldn't be able to be here. And then I would like the State of the City added to the agenda if the council would so approve. And then if there's any other additions or deletions to the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Motion, Mr. Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to have the State of the City at number eight. Where Mr. Baker will.
Okay, we'll do that. Anything else for the good of the order? All in favor of the adjusted agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next we have consent items, which will be covered by our city clerk, Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of January 6th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of January 13th, Planning Commission minutes of January 8th, application for appointment Khalifa Ahmed Basir to the Planning Commission, application for exempt permit for the Wilmer Surtoma Club, application for exempt permit Kandoye Friends of NRA, application for exempt permit Wilmer Senior High Trap Team, and for council's acceptance, the Park and Recreation Board minutes of December 18th, and the building report for the month of December 2019.
To approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. With that, next item on the agenda would be the State of the City. Good evening, councilmembers, city staff, and citizens of Wilmer. This evening, I'd like to present the 2020 State of the City address for the citizens of Wilmer. Our future is bright, and we have many things to be thankful for. We are a growing and vibrant community. Last year, we had an aggressive agenda and have started working on a number of the council priorities from 2019. Our agreed priorities include working on our local option sales tax projects, developing a plan for a new city hall with an updated community center, and continuing to work on our stormwater challenges. As we look to our future, I would like to thank the Invest in Wilmer Group for all their hard work in getting the local option sales tax question approved at the state level. Matt, John, Tony, and Mary are to be commended for their vision to make Wilmer an even stronger community than it already is. They identified six project areas, Robins Island, Event Center, Swanson Field, Athletic Fields, Community Center, and Stormwater Improvements as all projects that we should work on. In my opinion, these projects will be started in 2020 and will jumpstart our revised community image. Robins Island and Swanson Field should be started this year, and the other projects will follow as agreements are put into place. In 2019, the council has filled 13 positions due to retirements and job changes. When I received this information from Ms. Beckman, I was shocked that we had had 13 changes in positions this last year. So to our staff who has worked hard to fill those positions and cover those positions where there's been shortfalls, a special thank you to those people. Also, we still have one position in the police department yet to be filled, along with some of our police officer positions being in FTO positions. Also, in 2020, we will see two new positions added to the city. One will be a deputy fire chief position, and one will be a new position in finance yet to be determined what that exact position will be. Our fire department also added five new paid-on-call firefighters, and it continues to be a department that functions well. Our employees continue to be our strongest assets, and I want to give a shout-out to all of our employees as they have continued to work under strenuous situations. I also want to thank the council for their actions at the end of 2019 in moving our contracts forward and our pay schedule forward. Our goal is to be employer of choice, and we have made great strides in these areas over the past few months. 2020 is also a complete count year, commonly referred to as a census year, and I encourage our citizens to complete the census form listing Wilmer as your residence. There are a number of good reasons to do this, including increased local funding and retaining our congressional seats in Washington. Our current population is 19,610 officially, and I have heard from our EDC folks that they think our new population should be at least 20,500. Getting over the 20,000 number is a big number for us, for those of you that watch the funding and how that comes in. 20,000 is a big number for the city of Wilmer. So if you're a snowbird, we want you to come and be counted in Wilmer if this is where you live, your place of residence. Also, if you're a student, either list your residence here in Wilmer, or your home residence where you list your address as well. I want to thank the local committee who is working on the complete count and all that they are doing to get the word out. Please do your part and be counted. I just want to add a little something here is that our complete count committee has been recognized by the state of Minnesota as being one of the leaders, and Ms. Thompson is the leader in that division, and she has worked very diligently. A lot of the state meetings I go to, there's recognition that comes back to Wilmer for our work on the complete count. So thank you for the work that you're doing on that. I appreciate that. Having a community that's open and welcoming to our diverse community continues to be a strength for Wilmer. Along with that, addressing our housing needs has started with the opening of 15th Street Flats, and two multifamily housing projects are in the ground and should be open for occupancy in 2020. There is still an additional need for housing at all levels, and I look forward to a few new projects that I've heard about for the council to consider within the next year. Wilmer's economic engine continues to be strong, and I look forward to seeing new projects being considered for Wilmer's future. We have our Opportunity Zone approved, and the rewrite of the Comprehensive Plan will be a few of the projects that we work on in 2020. Starting the Wilmer Y Project will also allow us to open new areas for development and also decrease train traffic through the city of Wilmer. I received an email today from Aaron Bachman, and I just want to add this into my report as well. Some really crazy, wild, good things happening in the Wilmer area. In the past four years, Wilmer has had over 190 million in new construction in commercial, industrial, institutional, and housing construction. Last year, there was a total of 62 million in construction value in Wilmer. Significant 2019 projects include Ziegler CAT, Child Adolescent Behavioral Health Services Facility, and the Herzog Unique Opportunities Housing Project. In addition to that, for those of you that followed the governor's proposal for bonding, there is some additional dollars that will be put into the Cabs unit as well if it's approved by legislation. While Kandoye County's population ranks 23rd in Minnesota, its economy ranks 17th largest in Minnesota. It was the 16th fastest-growing economy since 2013. From 2013 to 2018, employers in Kandoye County added jobs at a rate of 8.2%, outpacing the state's 7% growth rate. The 2019 Polycom rated Wilmer as the top metropolitan community in Minnesota and 66th in the country out of 551 cities. In 2015, our economic strength ranking was 135th in the entire United States. As I conclude, Wilmer's future is bright, and we have many things to be thankful for as we look into 2020. I want to thank the citizens of Wilmer for their support and continued investment in making Wilmer a strong community. Our community is stronger today because of the public input we receive from our citizens, and I look forward to hearing from you as we work to make our community even a stronger regional leader. Thank you for allowing me to serve as your mayor, and my prayer is that God continues to bless the city of Wilmer. That concludes my report.
Open forum, was there anybody, Ms. Thompson? Next is Finance Committee report, Ms. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Finance Committee met at 5:15 on January 9th, 2020. Present was councilmembers Nelson, Alvarado, Plowman, and Osmus. Also present was Finance Director Steve Okens and Public Works Superintendent Gary Manzer. We had several items that will need action tonight. The first one, and I am going to read the minutes here so people understand why we need to make this amendment to the Local Option Sales Tax Ordinance. Staff explained in the past that the city collected the excise tax portions of the local option sales tax. Since the city adopted Ordinance 1436, which established the local option sales tax, the state of Minnesota has changed the rules which would allow the Minnesota Commissioner of Revenue to collect the motor vehicle excise taxes at the same time as the collection of the local option sales tax. This process would make the collection more efficient and require less administrative time per city staff. The city attorney also noted that the internet sales are to be charged, sales tax, and the wording should be put in place to automatically incorporate future state statute changes to the local option sales tax. The city attorney has drafted the amended ordinance incorporating all three of those changes. It was moved and seconded to introduce an ordinance to amend Ordinance 1436 for the collection of the motor vehicle excise tax, for the addition of internet sales, and for the wording, excuse me, incorporating future state statute changes to the local sales tax, and to set a public hearing. And I'll enter that motion now. Second.
Motion made and seconded to set a public hearing for February 3rd on the local option sales tax, Ordinance Number 1436. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Councilmember Nelson.
We were also requested to enter a motion to consider publication of this ordinance by summary, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to publish the ordinance by summary.
And of course, those will be still available at City Hall or online for anybody who would like to see them in their entirety.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes as well. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Next, we will have, there are four resolutions regarding the Destination Playground donations. Staff noted that the Wilmer Area Community Foundation had received excess donations of 75,000 for the Destination Playground. The Destination Playground Committee has been working with city staff to make several enhancements to the playground area. One of the major enhancements would be to provide a shade structure in the area of the playground equipment that is exposed to the sun. The Wilmer Area Community Foundation will donate to the city a sum not to exceed 75,000 for the purpose of reimbursing the city for costs incurred for the city to purchase and install the playground up to four permanent shade structures for the playground's southern and western elevations in such specific quantity as recommended by the Playground Executive Team. The cost of the four shade structures with shipping is $47,108, and the labor to install the four shade structures is $18,677, for a total of $65,785. The excess funds would be used to relocate the wiring to the Four Seasons Shelter for the cameras and the electrical. It was moved to recommend, there was a motion to recommend the acceptance of the donation of 75,000 from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation for the shade structure project, and I'll enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the donation of 75,000 for the shade structure at the Destination Playground. Discussion. Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to give a shout-out and a thank you to the Destination Playground Committee for this donation. If anyone has been at the playground on a hot day with little breeze, you'll know why we need the shade structure, and I think our children and parents alike will very much appreciate it. So thank you for all those who generously gave to the project in the past. It has made this donation possible, so thank you.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Our second motion was to adopt a budget of 75,000 for installing the shade structures at the Destination Playground, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the budget for the shade structure at the Destination Playground. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember Nelson.
Our last item was to make a motion to adopt the budget of 15,000 for the signage, trash management, and water filtration shed project, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes as well. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Our last item were discussion items, and just a reminder to review the fund balances policy and the investment policy. We are planning to do that at our next finance meeting. That was the end of our business, and I will enter a motion to approve the minutes at this time.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file amendments. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next we have Community Development Committee report for January 13th, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met Monday, January 13th at 5:15 at City Hall. In attendance were myself, Vicky Davis, Shawn Mesky, and Kathy Schwantes, along with staff of Dr. David Ramstead and city planner Sarah Swedberg. Also, the West Central Tribune was there, Aaron Bachman from the EDC, and John Heron and Kevin Marty from the Wilmer Municipal Utilities. Item two was public comments. No one was there to speak to us. Item three was draft policies for the Renaissance Zone for downtown Wilmer. Given to the committee for vetting purposes were eight draft policies for the Renaissance Zone for key stakeholders inside and outside City Hall for the incentives and zoning policies for the proposed overlay of the downtown district of Wilmer. They are Renaissance tax abatement incentives, Renaissance free permit incentives, and cost benefit review for such things as building permits, Renaissance free city-owned land incentive, Renaissance heritage designation incentive, Renaissance matching forgivable loan for facade renovations, Renaissance removal of holiday weekend parking restrictions, Renaissance bar license, and Renaissance open zoning. Staff is looking for specific and detailed feedback from the committee members after the members have received this draft, and we'll be talking about it in the next upcoming committee meeting. MUC employees showed support for this process that may lead to the environmental cleanup and ultimate preservation of the soon-to-be decommissioned Municipal Utilities Plant. They also are exploring ways that the Municipal Utilities Commission may help with incentives in the Renaissance Zone. A motion was made and seconded to approve staff's request to continue developing the Renaissance Zone incentives and begin vetting the documents with internal and external stakeholders. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Councilmember Fagerly.
Item four was department updates, including informational recap of the Artist on Main Street program by Sarah Swedberg. Staff highlighted some of the department's achievements mentioned in the council biweekly update of January 13th, including a total 2019 construction volume of 63 million. Mr. Bachman said 62.
We're off by one.
We're going by a 63.
Okay. A little bit higher than, stepping up.
And a number of first annual cultural events that were initiated last year, and talked about the progress being made to increase department automation, among other things. And there was no further business, and we adjourned at 6:17. So I'll make a motion to file these minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes, discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next we have consideration of granting access to multi-unit housing structures and certain private roads by the United States Census Bureau. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, according to the state demographer's office, renters are most likely grouped to be missed in the 2020 census. Renter households are more likely to contain historically undercounted individuals, and people in rental housing are more likely to live in multi-unit buildings which are difficult for census enumerators to access when they are trying to follow up in person to non-responding households. Several cities and counties in the state of Minnesota are adopting an ordinance to ensure a more accurate count for their communities, and it is my recommendation that we do the same.
Motion to approve the ordinance granting access to multi-unit housing structures and certain private roads by the U.S. Census Bureau employees and set a public hearing for February 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to introduce an ordinance granting access to multi-unit housing structures. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Motion made and seconded to publish by summary. Discussion. All in favor of the, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes as well. Next is a consideration of a resolution to enter into orderly annexation joint agreement with Wilmer Township. Ms. Swedberg.
Mayor, members of the council, we have a long-awaited annexation before us tonight. If some of you remember approving the grant that was funded through the Minnesota Deed Department, this annexation accompanies that sewer extension out to Epitopics. So this annexation before you tonight is approximately 80.91 acres, encompasses seven different parcels, eight property owners. The city received a petition from five of those eight property owners. All eight have been notified a number of times about the process and opportunities to present any comments in regards to the annexation. The notice of intent was published in the West Central Tribune on December 28th and January 9th, and the Planning Commission reviewed this item on December 18th, finding it in alignment with the Comprehensive Plan. The joint resolution went before the township on January 7th. If all parties approve this resolution, the annexation will be sent to the state of Minnesota this week for completion of this action. It would be a staff recommendation to adopt a resolution entering into this orderly annexation.
Motion made and seconded to enter into orderly annexation joint agreement with Wilmer Township. Ms. Swedberg.
Mayor, members of the council, we have a long-awaited annexation before us tonight. If some of you remember approving the grant that was funded through the Minnesota Deed Department, this annexation accompanies that sewer extension out to Epitopics. So this annexation before you tonight is approximately 80.91 acres, encompasses seven different parcels, eight property owners. The city received a petition from five of those eight property owners. All eight have been notified a number of times about the process and opportunities to present any comments in regards to the annexation. The notice of intent was published in the West Central Tribune on December 28th and January 9th, and the Planning Commission reviewed this item on December 18th, finding it in alignment with the Comprehensive Plan. The joint resolution went before the township on January 7th. If all parties approve this resolution, the annexation will be sent to the state of Minnesota this week for completion of this action. It would be a staff recommendation to adopt a resolution entering into this orderly annexation.
Motion made and seconded to enter into orderly annexation joint agreement with Wilmer Township. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Thank you for your hard work, and I know we have folks here from Epitopics and also the EDC, Dr. Ramstead as well. Thank you for everybody who worked on this project and to make this a successful project. I know that this was one of the issues that was on my table when I was first elected as mayor and working with LSI in wanting to get this done, and now we're able to get it done now. So we are very thankful for that and looking forward to the annexation and the extension of services, but also, more importantly, looking forward as well to the expansion of the business out there. So thank you very much for everybody that worked on this. So, thank you. Next we have consideration of an ordinance to rezone certain property from limited industrial to general business. Ms. Swedberg.
All right, Mayor, members of the council, the next item is this introduction of rezoning. As a quick refresher, rezoning takes two council meetings. First, we introduce it, and then we hold a public hearing. So this is simply the introduction. If you recall, in 2018, we created this commercial corridor along Industrial Drive leading into the industrial park for the provision of kind of commercial services to this general area in town. Particularly before us at that point was the childcare center, which is in progress at this point. We have been approached again by another interested party a little bit further south of this corridor that we created who was interested in seeing that corridor expand, again to provide these commercial services on properties that are in the oldest part of the industrial park. And so the infrastructure that's in place, the buildings, simply aren't up to kind of standards for industrial users. So it's been very difficult to find property owner, or users interested in these properties. The commission reviewed, Planning Commission reviewed and held a public hearing approving this request on December 18th and January 8th, and it would be staff recommendation to introduce this ordinance to rezone property from limited industry to general business for a public hearing on February 3rd.
So.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to consider introduction of an ordinance to rezone certain properties from limited industrial to general business. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Next we have a resolution approving a memorandum agreement including the deputy fire chief in the supervisor's unit.
Good evening. You have a memorandum before you to formally recognize the deputy fire chief position in the supervisor unit. This was discussed way back in the Labor Committee on September 16th when we approved the.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution approving a memorandum agreement including the deputy fire chief in the supervisor's unit.
Good evening. You have a memorandum before you to formally recognize the deputy fire chief position in the supervisor unit. This was discussed way back in the Labor Committee on September 16 when we approved the job description. So, this is just formally recognizing them in the unit through the memorandum.
So moved. Right. Motion made and seconded to approve a memorandum agreement including the deputy fire chief in the supervisor unit. Discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
I'll just add that we we could have taken the issue up at the Labor Committee, but we felt that this was, it mirrored the the same discussion points we had with the assistant to the city administrator position that we did before, so we thought we could bring it here directly. So, if it seems like this is something that we would normally have handled in committee, the committee thought we should just bring it to here since it was the same same arguments we had heard before.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember announcements. So, starting with Councilmember Schwantus.
I'll pass, thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
I just want to say I can't wait till next summer to go sit in the shade at Robins Island.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would encourage people just to get involved with community activities. I know our Parks and Recs Department, they work hard to pull things together for the community, and I would just encourage you to take the time to check it out. And there's things going on at the city auditorium during the winter months. Check that out. It's, we have a great community. It's here to be used. Get out there and use it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Osmus.
I have a question, and maybe Councilmember Alvarado could answer it, but taking down the decorations from the lights out at Robins Island, I just, we're going to get 30-degree weather in the next couple of days. Is that done, or is there a date yet or time when people can volunteer to do that?
Good question. I have not been a part of that process, to tell you the truth.
Does anybody know? Be a good thing to announce.
I believe they have to wait till it warms up so that the structures that are frozen to the ground, they have to wait till that warms up. So, I think it would be probably later in the year, but I haven't officially heard that. I just heard rumors of that, and I'm going from experience last year.
Sure.
Maybe staff can check on that. Or, is Rob here? Rob, do you know?
No, I'm not.